Yeah, let's start. Just show on the road.
Good evening. We are... Good evening. Love to start our, um, weekly business meeting for the Board of Commissioners. It is five o'clock on Wednesday, June 26th. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a report, Commissioner? None this week, thank you. None this week, okay. I did read of one officer that was pretty violently killed the other day, so... All right, so we are here to do a night meeting, get a little bit of change of, um, an evening meeting, to get a little change of... maybe some new people could come in. And we don't see that taking place yet, so, um... Amendments to the agenda? I think I would like to start with, we're gonna pull, um, the higher order for... Is that F?
F.
We're pulling that one. And we're also, because we did it earlier, we're going to be pulling J off of the, uh, action items. Are there any other amendments to the agenda?
Yes. I'm sorry, there is. Um, so there would be a new F or an addition, which would be the Tempor Higher Or... Temporary Higher Order, um, for Park Host for Lobster Creek.
Park.
And actually, let me correct that, it's actually not in the form of a higher order. It's in the form of another agreement. That's how Parks does it, they do... can't post agreements, not higher orders.
Okay. And anything else?
Mr. Chair. Actually, I have three I'm trying to get to the agenda here. One is, uh, I want to table...
Put your mic on, please.
Excuse me, thank you. I'm asking the Board to table, uh, the Curry Board Commissioners Resolution on House Bill 2020. I can give you a reason now, or I can give a rea... uh, reason later. That's number one.
Um, well, if we're gonna think about taking it off the agenda, let's talk about it now.
Uh, we're hopeful that the Senators will return tomorrow morning. Uh, the word is likely that they will. And thank you to, uh, two Democratic Senators, Roblin and Betsy Johnson, um, from northwestern Oregon. Uh, they're both going to vote no on that. So therefore, the Senate would not have the 20 votes it needs to pass a dreadful bill. And so, I think we start the healing process. I think we work towards Representative David Brock Smith's House Bill 3433, which starts, um, is primarily focused to collect data for, uh, forest carbon and, uh, carbon sequestration. And is a very responsible bill. So I would like to have that pulled from the agenda today.
So that's definitely a, uh, a no vote on that?
Well, we won't know until the Senators return tomorrow. Uh, I think the chances are very good. I trust, uh, Rosie and Senator Roblin's office. And, uh, he's not just hedging, but, uh, you know, he could change his mind in the next few hours. I very seriously doubt that Representative Betsy Johnson will change her mind. But even if one of them doesn't, they still don't have the votes needed. So, uh, it's very good news for rural counties, especially for Curry County and what the cost would be to us. I see no need to go through with the resolution.
Any, uh, any opposition to taking that off?
I'm fine with that.
I just, uh, for me, I, I don't know that counties, uh, you know, do I agree with the bill? No, I don't. But I don't know as county commissioners, if it's something that we need to be involved in, and this is a vote. And, um, I think individuals should, should vote their hearts on these things. So I don't know that this is something that the Board fully needs to consider. Like I said, I'm, I personally, my personal opinions on it are that I, I'm not in agreement with much of it. So, um, I, I agree we take it off.
Okay, I just want to respond to that, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Uh, it's the legislative branch, the county government is the judicial branch, uh, the legislative branch. There is certainly, in a collective Board decision, on a resolution like this, just for example, and for future reference, to send a message out in support of a bill, or in this case, opposition to. Uh, it's, it gives our citizens, the people that we represent, a direction and, uh, it certainly gives cause to why we would oppose, uh, what is often viewed, in this case, a very popular bill throughout metro Oregon. And so, um, we can certainly have further discussion, or debate, or even dialogue on this. But it is, if, for just one example, the impact it would have on the fuel for our two largest departments, county departments, the sheriffs and, and, uh, road department, the fuel cost would be something that we haven't budgeted for, and would be a major hit to our budget. So I can give you more examples, but I think that's enough for today.
Well, I just, no, I'm not ignorant to the examples, Commissioner. I just, like I said, this is more of a personal thing. And do I agree that this Board has to agree on certain things? And is it good for us to, um, express as a Board, um, our agreement on, on a lot of this? Yes, I'm just wondering if this particular one, in my opinion, is one we needed, needed to deal with anyway. So, again, you've asked for it to be removed, and I believe the Board is in agreement that we will remove it.
Do you need a motion?
Um, do we need a motion on that, Council?
It would basically be to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, yeah, but that's for later.
And I think we've got our consensus, so that's good enough. And then we'll approve the amended agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the second one, if I may?
Yes.
Um, the, uh, the Wolf Committee, Wolf Advisory Committee, I've had a couple additional people that would like to, um, participate and put their applications in. Give us some additional citizens to, to choose from, very important committee. But I think the urgency, um, that we had maybe even a month ago, there's been no additional kills, probable kills that we're aware of. And so, I would like to table this to our next meeting and have a couple of additional applicants.
Didn't we table this already once? Wasn't it already put off one time because we didn't have enough applicants?
Not that I recall.
We, we did not have enough applicants, so we had to rerun it in the paper. So, um, the second time, now we have enough... now we have enough.
Actually, we have more than enough.
We do, right now, we have.
So this, what I'm saying, this has already been run a few times in the paper?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So is there an urgency?
I don't know that there's an urgency, but we've had already enough citizens that have signed up more than enough that we need, um, to go ahead and move forward with this. I'd like to go ahead and move forward with it.
Okay, I stand in opposition, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
I've been working really hard on this issue, so I have a strategy and a direction that I'd like to go. So I've expressed that to the Board now, and I think it would be wise to wait.
I think we've got enough applicants, and we've already put it out a couple of times. So I, I say, let's go with it, go with what we've got today.
And, and if, if it was just over the timeline or something, I would agree that we table it. But this is already, like I said, it's already been in the paper a couple of times. We've got enough applicants, and I don't want people to get discouraged by saying, you know what? I put in my application, and they had enough, and why didn't they choose me? Um, it's hard enough to get people in the community to, to join these things. So I'd like to move forward with it.
Well, and I read the applications, and it looked like we had some very qualified people, so, in my opinion.
All right.
One more, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the hours of operation change for county departments. Uh, I'm not satisfied, uh, after talking to a couple different department heads, that we have given this enough time. I'd like to recommend that we consider postponing this, or, and/or having a workshop. It's, uh, I'm certainly in general agreement with the principle of having Fridays covered, but I want to make sure that we have all the data. I don't at this point in time. So that's my reason for asking this to be postponed.
Okay.
And I'm also requesting in addition that we have a workshop to bring, uh, a couple more department heads in and see if there's something we're missing here that we need to be informed of.
I don't have a problem with putting that off for another meeting.
That's okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Let me see, what one was that one, department?
That was H.
Excuse me, H, I'm sorry.
Okay, there we go. All right, so, uh, do I have a motion for the amended agenda of removing, um, F, adding an, an FA, which is Park Host, uh, for Lobster Creek in agreement? Removing, uh, H, removing J, and removing K?
I still move.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, moving on to the consent... oh, I'm sorry, we have public comments. I don't have any up here. Good, we're good to go. Uh, consent agenda. Um, Surface Transportation Program Fund Exchange Agreement with ODOT, Department of Transportation, a camp host agreement. Is that the same one as Lobster Creek?
No, that's a different one.
That's a different one? Uh, an order adopting the local public health authority grant sub-re seat monitoring rules. Master payroll fiscal year 2019-20. Higher order for a commercial appraiser, an FA which is a park host for Lobster Creek in, in agreement. I get a motion, please.
I move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second? I'll second. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, moving on to five discussion items. A, appoint members of the Wolf Advisory Committee, Ms. Schmelzer.
All right, you have in front of you the applications that we've received. And basically, we have two Commissioners that are interested in serving. So we have to make a decision, um, whether it is Commissioner Boyce or Commissioner Pash. And then, we had, we need to appoint four people from the following list of five. Scott Knox, who is a rancher in the Gold Beach area. Elaine Palmerine.
Palmerine?
Palmerine, a sheep rancher in Pistol River. Carol Simas, uh, she has a BS in Fish and Wildlife. David Barnes, who is a livestock owner and conservationist. And William Crook, who taught natural resources and was on, with the Department of Ag. And then after those four are appointed, um, they would appoint the remaining two, which would be the, um, business owners, um, which you have in the application. Which would be Rodrick McKenzie, he's a rancher from Langloy. And then William Douglas, master hunter, large landowner involved with the ODFW.
Now, I will say this on the record. I'm a rancher and a Commissioner, but if I have to arm wrestle you for this, I'll, I'll give it up.
You know, I've been thinking about that. I've, I've been trying to give you some information. I attended the, if now's okay to discuss?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I went to the full day meeting, well, five hours, um, the last, um, Commissioner meeting that they had for ODF and W, and it was tremendous. And yes, I brought that information back, gave to Mr. and Ms. Schmelzer, assuming you would get that. Quite enlightening. Uh, I have a lot of comments on that. I've been pushing this for a couple of years. The Wolf situation, if in fact it's here, and I think the chances are good. It come a lot sooner than what we anticipated. So it's a potentially big issue for Curry County. And I'll just make this one comment, two related. The, the staff of ODF and W that work on the Wolf Action Plan, they reminded the Board, the Commission, excuse me, um, that wolves are very expensive to monitor. And of the 139 count that they have, they believe that's only what they're aware of. When you get mating pairs, um, it's, it's even more difficult to, uh, to monitor for them. So the expenses to Oregon operating under the US fishing game is one thing. But one story went off for you, the Rogue Pack that's pretty famous in the Rogue Valley. They don't know where that group is right now. They know they have a mating pair, and they're concerned that they've come east, excuse me, come west from the east, and when they get in the rugged territory, they're even more difficult to locate and monitor and research. And almost impossible, when they get in our kind of terrain, to put collars on them, which is their best option, most expensive, but the best option, to, to learn all that they possibly can. Especially about the mating pairs. So I'm very concerned for what that is gonna, uh, mean long-term for Curry County. Introducing a new predator just shocks me to where, if we lose more deer and elk, what that can mean. And not, not to mention for the ranchers. So if you're determined you want to be on this committee, I think you'd be a great representative. I don't want to be, um, uh, disqualified and come into meetings. I think that's ridiculous. I won't be able to speak, uh, or, or choose, uh, and I'll give you an example. AOC, two Coos County Commissioners were there on our Board of Directors last week. You know, it's just, what Curry County continually does is say Commissioners can't be under the same roof is ridiculous. Anyway, I, if, if you want to decide today, are you representing?
I've already thought about it, and it's fine. If you wanted to be on the, on the Wolf Committee, you've done a lot of work on it already. I'm fine with it. I'm, I was just teasing you, actually, more than anything.
Well, but I don't want to defer, uh, I do want to defer if...
I do, I do know that we've got several ranchers.
Commissioner Gold will vote for me, so that might be the easiest way out here.
I do know we have several ranchers, and my concern, like yours, is introducing another predator.
Thank you.
Into this county. Because with what the, you know, with what we lose now, my neighbor behind me has sheep, and he's sat and told me that he's lost dozens of sheep this year. And not necessarily to wolves, but to coyotes, to, you know, to, to cats and all that stuff. So, um, I can't imagine introducing another predator into our, our community, our livestock communities. And anything we can do to prevent that is, is money well spent. So, um, I will defer to you, uh, to be on that, but I mean, we have to vote, but...
As long as you're in agreement that I can attend meetings and without setting policy can, uh, we can, we can jointly, or even for that matter, Commissioner Gold would be welcome to go. We just can't set, set policy.
I don't know that much about wolves. I guess I could learn, but...
All right, so, uh, we want to have a vote on these, is...
That is correct. So if you look at the order in front of you, we have to vote for one Commissioner. And then their term would end December 31st, 2020, so we have to have staggered terms.
That would be good, then, because that would be when Ms. Commissioner Boyce's first, you know, his first term would be around then to end, so...
And then vote for two from the next column, which would be the livestock owner manager, Scott Knox, Elaine or David. And then we have to determine which term they would have. Um, one would end in 2020, one would end in 2021. And then vote for two from the, um, the third group, which would be Carol, William, or David. And again, we're looking at the terms of 2022 or 2023.
Where are the groups at?
So it's at the very back of the packet, at the end of the applications.
Do we have some paper, we can just vote?
These are all very good people, so we can vote for them all at once.
I don't have that packet.
I would like to...
I just wrote down names because I went through the...
We don't have that packet, I don't think.
It's on the...
It's on your screen.
It's on the screen.
Right, I know, but they're not enlisted in groups on the screen, I don't think, are they?
They, on page...
Oh, good.
Oh, there it is, you are right. Okay, I got it.
It's like the 16 or 17.
Do you want to do a silent vote, a written vote, or do you would like to just do a voice vote?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I understand it right, we don't have to eliminate anyone here, except one Commissioner, correct?
No.
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 Okay, so we have, uh...
There were five applicants with four positions.
Okay, David Barnes would be, uh, support wolf conservation. He's not a rancher. If you compare him to Scott Knox or Elaine Palmerine, Elaine Palmerine probably owns 200 sheep or more. Scott Knox, many cattle, as you know. So should David Barnes actually be under the support wolf conservation? Oh, he is, I'm sorry, I'm looking at him twice. I, I, my, my apology. He's listed under both.
All right. So do we want to do a written vote, or do we want to do just a voice vote?
A voice is fine with me.
It's fine with me. Commissioner Boyce, is that all right?
Yes.
All right, so I'll nominate Court Boyce for position one as Commissioner.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Abstain.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried two to nothing.
I'll just start out with the noms, then. Um, and you guys can vote or no. Is that how you want to do it? I'll vote, I'll nominate Scott Knox and Elaine Palmerine for the vote two, uh, you know, in the second line.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion?
What is the term for each one?
Uh, I'm sorry, Scott Knox will be 123120, Elaine Palmerine will be 123121. You second that? Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
I'll nominate William Crook and David Barnes for, uh, William Crook for 2022, David Barnes for 23.
That's a tough one. I mean, what, you gotta eliminate one, and it's...
I looked at Carol Simas, and she had extensive knowledge in this area.
See, I don't want to vote against any one of those three.
Maybe we ought to do a silent vote there.
Well...
You can't, you can only put two.
Can we have one alternate, and let them choose which is the alternate? I know, I know the Department of Ag.
I think we're opting out, I think we need to come up with a...
This reminds me of when we did that thing, when we selected the Port Commissioners, and we had to remind the people that we did not select, that they were still possible to be selected. Because if you recall, we're selecting five of the seven, and the five we select, select the other two. So, um...
I can withdraw.
So, anyway.
Well, did you hear what he just said? This is great.
I'll withdraw.
Okay. So Mr. Barnes is withdrawing. So now we have Carol Sims and William...
Simas.
I'm sorry, Simas. Forgive me, Ms. Simas. Uh, and, uh, and William Crook. I'll nominate them. Uh, 12, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Simas will be, uh, 123122, Mr. Crook will be 123123.
Can we reverse that, please?
Okay, Mr. Crook will be 123122, Ms. Simas will be 123123. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Yes, further discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, uh, Bill Crook is getting up to be 80, or maybe even a little more. But he also has some 100-year history on South, well, southwest Oregon, all of Curry County. And I think will be very, uh, be a good participant. Uh, he's just gonna have to take a number when he wants to visit, because it's, he, he may take over the meeting, and he knows I'm gonna challenge him on that. Thank you, that's all.
All right, roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, there we go on that.
So just a final comment on that. So the other two applicants, like I said, were William Douglas and Rodrick McKenzie. So, um, when this Board does meet, those are the two applicants that we have that they can choose from.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Rod McKenzie is from North County. The two we selected as livestock owner managers are both from Central County. I just realized that, but, um, I can talk to Mr. McKenzie and encourage him to stay interested. Plus, we can't take any additional applicants for the committee to choose from, can we?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on now to, uh, ordinance second reading for the amended marijuana ordinance. Ms. Schmelzer.
Okay, um, ordinance 1604 directs the proceeds from the county's marijuana tax program to be dedicated to the, or, um, directed to the general fund. This amended ordinance would direct those funds to the Sheriff's Office.
All right. You need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
I move that we approve the, um, amended marijuana ordinance.
I'll second that. Further discussion?
For clarification, Council, that would become effective in 90 days, is that correct?
Yes, this is a non-emergency ordinance.
Correct.
Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, C, ordinance first reading for business license, Ms. Schmelzer.
This is the business license that was brought forward to the Board before for discussion. The primary change that was made was there was a discussion on what actually defines a business. So I just want to bring your attention to definitions. And, um, specifically, the first paragraph was changed, so there's not a reference to a dollar amount. Instead, it is, um, basically, a business would be defined as one that is registered with the State of Oregon as a business, have a federal employer identification number, a business identification number, have a payroll tax reporting number with the Oregon Business Registry, a combined employer's registration form from the Oregon Department of Revenue, or the Oregon Employment Department, or annually file a personal property report with the county assessor's office. And that was primarily the, the only change to the draft that you had seen.
And I think what that does also is it kind of, um, it raises the bar for small businesses, because there's a minimum dollar amount annually, uh, made before it becomes a taxable income. So I think that helps even further to protect the, the mom and pop type things that were being done in the county.
So just so the Board knows, this is the first reading. If they want to proceed with it, um, we still would have to have a second reading on the ordinance.
I have a motion?
I move that we, uh, approve the business license ordinance for the first reading.
A second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next, we have designation of newspapers of record. Council huddle.
Thank you. This is a re-up of the prior order where the Board established two papers as newspaper record. The, the Board is required by law to establish newspaper of record for advertising, legal advertising purposes. And so, uh, when we last considered it, the newspapers both approached the Board, gave a reduced rate for advertising if the Board would select them both. The Board found there were advantages of having one newspaper essentially in the northern part of the county, and another newspaper in the southern part of the county, uh, hoping there'd be coverage in the central. And, um, that's what they did last time. So this is just a re, um, presentation of that. And I don't really have much further to add, unless I did see a slash on here for Julie Schmelzer assisting in the presentation or as a contact person. I don't know if she has anything to add to that.
All I have are, um, information on the rates that are charged, that the two papers charge. That's what I was interested in.
And it's $2 an inch, is it?
Um, that I do not know.
I didn't see it on there, they got it as six.
Um, I just know from the, I just have the, from going through the invoices on some legal ads that we ran, how the differences, the differences that they have.
I just got mass attention back there, I noticed. He sat straight up.
This is for two years, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
You have to come to the mic, sir.
Thank you, very much. Oh my gosh.
Thank you.
The real thing.
My, last, last time around, uh, we are in agreement, more than happy to do this, glad to help County, glad to have the business. The Port Orford News is over 100 years old. It was really my intention and my understanding, although it didn't turn out that way, that the Port Orford News was included in this deal. Basically, the legal ads come dead as well. I've got anywhere from 500 to 1,000 people in the northern part of the county that, uh, still don't read the Curry County Reporter, they have the Port Orford News. Um, basically, there's still a segment of folks up there that, uh, you're not quite reaching. Now, we're out in Agnes, and we're down in Brookings, and, uh, and the reporter goes all the way up to the, uh, you know, Langloy, et cetera. We got sixes, uh, we're taking care of it. But I was hoping the Port Orford News would be included on this and receive the legals as well. It is the newspaper of record for northern Curry County, handles and receives many other legals.
So let's do that.
Same rates. Uh, what else about it? Serves you well, serves the County well, serves taxpayers well. Take a look at them, we carry your stuff.
We're looking at three newspapers now?
Yeah, I, I see, I, I think it's a good direction to go.
And I heard pigeon it, because, uh, one, we could use the support.
Heck, yeah.
I mean, the paper supports, and it is the newspaper for a lot of people. But number two, it's out there doing a job for you.
Last year, you had some, both you and, I can't remember, Scott Graves was here. Anyway, some very good circulation information that's, that was very helpful. So, I'd like to see that again at some point in the future. It doesn't have to be today, but all three papers were surprisingly pretty healthy. And so, I was, I thought that was good news. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Well read.
Commissioner Gold.
Well, first of all, I'd like to know what the total cost would be. We also have a problem of the pilot being bought out, so we don't know what that cost is. Is there any way we can defer this until we know what the cost is?
That's a question for Council Huddle, whether it can be deferred until we know what the price of a third paper would be and what those costs would be. Matt, did you submit anything showing what the cost would be?
Kim and I spoke and we're in agreement and stuff like that. Let me see, I think Kim's probably already signed basic agreement. I'll sign mine too and stuff like that. You don't necessarily have to defer this, put it off and/or otherwise, but I'm just telling you that the Port Orford News really should be included in on there and it's, it's pulling, you know, the, the weight for you. It's, you know, the shoulders behind the load. Anyway, that's...
Let me ask this because I don't know, Council. So, if we do a public ad for something, to announce something, it will go in three papers instead of two, that was just mandatory? No matter where, where in the county it is, if we'd like to say we're going to advertise for our next county meeting, it goes in all three papers instead of just the two?
So, if I could just slow that down slightly, a county meeting, just a general meeting, I don't think we advertise our county meetings in the papers. But these are legal advertisements typically, which is probably why my department's involved in this, which is mostly in economic analysis, but really it's for legal advertisements as well as sometimes our land use hearing advertisements and those kind of things. This is for the mandatory ads that we are required to run. My hunch would be, I, I don't know what the circulation of the pilot is or of the reporter. And Matt, I apologize on this, the old record here, sorry, Mr. Hall, I apologize on the old record here. You're signing for the reporter and I'm kind of misinterpreted that as you signing for more or less both papers. And that's where I thought, you know, both papers would be included.
I just assumed that last year.
I, well, we've run just about anything that you've sent us and stuff like that, but we have to bill separately for the two papers. I wish that we did not. What I'm, what I'm asking here is I'm asking for a little support for the, you know, for, for the paper that is doing a job, et cetera. I understand what Mr. Huddle is saying. I would like to point out once again with these papers and with previous papers that we serve faithfully. We get the news out there. We give the populace. They hear your voices as a result of us.
Can I ask a question? Are these other papers available in North County? Are they sold also in North County, the reporter and the pilot?
The reporters. I can't speak to the pilot.
Council Huddle?
Thanks. I think Commissioner Gold, if I could go back to Commissioner Gold's question on what the additional cost would be, and it would just be an estimate. So, if all papers had equal circulation, certainly then it would be a fifty percent additional cost of what we're running. Right? It'd be going from two to three, so you'd take half of what you had and add it on. My hunch would be of the three papers, Mr. Hall, or if Mr. Allen knows, circulation numbers, what's the, what's the comparative?
The Port Orford News would be the smallest of the three. There's, you know, it has historically been, there's twelve hundred people up there.
It wouldn't even be a fifty percent increase on our, on our cost.
Uh, wait, no, it would.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It would, I'm sorry. I'm just going to do an example on one that I have here. So, the road vacation notice that we just did in two thousand nineteen, the pilot, that was twenty-four dollars to run that ad, and it was a hundred and eight for the reporter. So now you're, so that was four times, and now we're going to add another paper. So I think we'd probably want to talk prices if we're going to do three papers.
And that's, that's what my next, my next thing was, I, I kind of think we do need to push this for another meeting. There's two things happening. First of all, the pilot is not, well, it's not been sold, but it's gone through bankruptcy. And the trustees there are still making a decision, but I believe it'll be under... It has, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it has been sold, so we need to make sure that they are going to continue with business as usual as well as wanting to do these same price structures that have been pre-signed on here. And I would also like for you, if you could, sir, to come up with the best price for two papers. You know, for the two papers and submit that to Ms. Schmelzer and, and then we can, we can look at that information and bring it back at the next meeting.
I, I understand the problem there, that there's a deviation between pricing and that is also because there's a deviation between the legal print on it. Basically, you, you are obligated to run your legals at a, the same size print that you, the smallest that you run. Say for your classifieds. Our classifieds are of good size. That's the size that we have to run them at. You see what I mean?
Yes.
So, and then also other times, we found it advantageous to go ahead and just simply, some of these documents need to be reproduced exactly. We do that if we can, we go ahead and we take them and we just copy and paste them and cut out all extra space, et cetera. But no, I understand that point with Ms. Schmelzer. Let me see.
Well, sir, if you would, please, I've got a couple more questions for you. Ms. Gold.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Council Huddle. My understanding was, before we, we came into an agreement with both papers, we had just one paper one year, the other paper the next year, so that we would not be paying as much. Is that legal?
I'm sorry, is it legal?
Yeah. Are we required to have, say, two papers, three papers, one paper?
No, you're, the, the law says we designate a newspaper of record.
Okay.
But that newspaper, I think, to be fair, needs to reach everyone in the county, so if, if there's limited circulation in North County, I agree that we should do something up there. I don't want anyone left out, so that's something to consider as well. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you just, you just basically said it right there, put my mind at ease a little bit. But we're not to be the arbiter of who buys what paper. The newspaper business, we know, is very tough. And so, in this little community, anything we can do to support all three newspapers solid, we're not talking about a lot of money here. I mean, I can tell you where we've lost and wasted a ton of money that is miniscule compared to what we're talking about here. So, I would like to get this done today, support all three newspapers equally. If we, I don't want to ask for better rates. If it's out of line, which I'm unaware of, then maybe we could address that.
Well, we don't know what we're approving.
I think we need to approve the, you know, and I think we need solid numbers. Firstly, I need to know that the pilot is going to continue. I would like something from them, that the new owners are going to continue business as usual, and they will honor the, the numbers that they've given us already. And I, and I do see...
That's not our business, if, if, you know...
It is our business, sir. If all of a sudden their price goes from six dollars an inch to fifteen dollars of an inch for the same...
Then we can come back and adjust, but right now we need to support.
And secondly, I'd like to know that, you know, I, I do have a question when Ms. Schmelzer tells me, one ad was thirty-some dollars and the other one was a hundred and something. And now we're going to do that, duplicate that again in another paper. That's, that's going from thirty dollars to two hundred and sixty.
Yeah, it was twenty-four dollars versus a hundred and eight, and that was just for the two papers. One paper charged twenty-four, one charged one oh eight.
And I hope you can appreciate that, sir.
Yes, I, no, I understand. Let me see.
So, moving forward with that, if we could, you reach out to the pilot tomorrow? And if you would, sir, give us your best, your best price for both papers and submit to Ms. Schmelzer and we can bring this back at the next meeting.
Well, right now, I've already told Kim, and Kim represents, basically, I was trying to get the Port Orford News in on this, dude. I didn't mean to throw a can of worms out and derail the entire process. You got an agreement with Kim, and I've got an agreement with Kim. Rather than throw the whole thing off, I'll just follow through. And then, if you end up having problems with the pilot or otherwise, you can readjust with me. And if you have some ads that you really feel are North County oriented, perhaps you might consider placing them in the Port Orford News as well. And we'll just move forward from that point because I, you know, basically, I didn't mean to. I told Kim, yes. I've told you guys, basically, yes, I just hadn't signed. And now I've, you know... What if you approved it and went ahead and then you can adjust from there if they have any lips?
Well, what I'm, what my whole point is now, is now that, you know, we're learning that it's twenty-six and a hundred and eight, that, that's a huge disparity. And I, and I hope you can appreciate that, and I know you have to go on a minimal size for print, but we have to look at, you know, where...
I tell you what, they're not up in Agnes. We have Linda Graves in Agnes and we've always had Agnes. We've got North County, we've got Gold Beach, pretty solid. It's, I mean, we haven't been overly intrusive down in Brookings. We definitely have Port Orford, we definitely have Langley, we definitely have sixes. You try to cut one of those papers out of there. What you're doing is you're cutting, you're not just saving money.
I'm not trying to cut your papers, sir. I am not your enemy here.
Get the message that you're obligated to.
Matt, please, I'm asking you. Okay, I'm not, I'm not your enemy here, sir. I'm just trying to get the best thing that I, you know, the, the best that we can do for this county. And all I'm trying to say is I would like you to think about it this evening and talk, you know, let's talk with all three papers and submit your best offer to Ms. Schmelzer so that this county knows exactly what we're going to pay.
What you're doing is you're opening the entire process up again. And you also opened up the idea of possibly just going back to one...
No, I'm not opening the entire process again. You open the entire process by...
You're asking for rebids. What I asked for was the...
I'm going to make a motion, if I may, Mr. Chair, that we include all three newspapers. And yes, I'm a little biased towards making sure we recognize all three areas of the county. North County often gets overlooked. That's an understatement. So my motion is to accept all three newspapers. We'll do the best we can to coordinate and ask for the best possible rates, but I don't want to make it an issue. These papers need support. Can you imagine what it'll be like if any of them go down or all of them? Thank you. There's my motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My, on my comment is this. You just heard me say ten minutes ago, I am all for the possibility of having three papers. I do not want Port Orford left out of this process. I said that publicly a minute ago and you said thank you for that. So I don't know where you think that I, I want to leave Port Orford out of anything, and please don't insinuate that to the constituents of this county.
Well, then vote now.
I'm not going to vote for something that I don't know the numbers to. I need to know where the numbers are.
You're getting angry, Mr. Chair. I apologize.
Because you've chastised me three times today, Commissioner Boyce, three times. And I won't, I won't tolerate a fourth, sir. I would appreciate respect, as I respect you.
You know, I'm not going to debate you right now because you're completely out of line, sir.
I will ask, I will again ask for, sir, if you would, your best price to Ms. Schmelzer in the next week. Pilot to know that we are doing, they are still doing business as usual, to verify with this board that their price will remain the same. And then we can look at this again next week. Those are my comments. Do I have a vote for the, the motion on the, on the floor?
Commissioner Gold.
No.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Commissioner Pash.
No.
Motion not carried, one to two.
E, rehire for Louise Colstrom, Ms. Schmelzer?
Okay, as you know, Louise Colstrom, our finance director, has resigned. She has agreed to stay on in an irregular position to help us out in the interim until we do find a new finance director. So, in order to hire her in that interim, we do need an order for her as an irregular employee. The, the title of it is the interim finance director. The rate is thirty-five ninety-one an hour. And that would go until such time, like I said, until we have someone hired for the position.
Commissioner Gold.
Is she willing to train the new person?
Louise was here.
She was here.
I think she said she could do some limited, but also I've, I've talked to Sessi about this and, or Sina, I mean, I keep using Sessi. And she said that she would be also instrumental in training the new person as well.
It sounds like Sina has, is usually the one who, Sina and Julie end up doing, you know, when, when the finance director's gone, they, they do a lot of the work, but they also do the training. Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion?
I move that we approve the rehire of Louise Colstrom as interim finance director.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Boyce.
I'll be glad to second this, however, concerned, this is all going to be done through email? She's not going to be here, right? Just to let the public know?
Uh, that's, that's correct. It'd be from a distance.
Okay, so phone's and email. And you're, you're confident, and I am, that it's a reasonable compensation for her on this?
I believe it is. This is how Louise had, or Ms. Colstrom had helped us last time. So, you know, she, it's my understanding she did a fair job. There were no excessive charges. Basically, she could just walk on and she, you know, she's passionate about the county, so she wants to help. I think it's a very fair offer on her part. I'm glad she made the offer.
Thank you. And we're going to miss her second, Mr. Chair, on that motion?
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, on to F, pay temporary increase in the finance department, Ms. Schmelzer.
Okay, the last time that Louise had left, or I'm not sure if it was when Louise left, but one of the finance directors had left, Gary Short, when Gary Short had left, Sina and Julie in that office were given a temporary increase because of the additional duties that they were taking on. So what this does is it's consistent. It gives them that temporary increase until such time as we have a finance director on staff and until there is some training involved as well. So it's not like the day that person starts their interim step would cease. It would be when that actual person is trained.
The reins are handed over.
Correct, correct, yes.
Well, as the, as the liaison to finance, I'll alert the board that I have also looked at this and everything on, on the, on it that Ms. Schmelzer and I have talked about seemed very reasonable.
I would just like to add that this interim says, or this says that they would do that training up to four weeks. After four weeks, then that interim pay would stop and we would expect the person to be trained well enough that they would not have to be doing that much additional work.
Have a motion?
I move that we approve a temporary pay increase in the finance department, and that would be for Julie Swift and Sina Crook.
I have a second. I'll second. Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
G, private property sale proposal, Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, this was brought to us by Mrs. Elmer, Connie Elmer, and Cedric Bersat, if I have the names pronounced correctly. They wrote us quite a while ago. They were interested in buying two very small pieces of par, property that are adjacent to their land. The land is very small in nature. One piece is point twelve acres, the other one is point one nine acres. Property, I don't want to say isn't unusable, but it's, one portion is kind of on a slope, a down slope, and then the other one is kind of stuck behind a fence. They are here, if you want them to speak. Otherwise, what they did do was they did offer to purchase the property. They offered five hundred dollars for both parcels. They understand that there is also on top of that purchase price a three hundred fifty-dollar application fee, and they would have to record the deeds. The property has already been surveyed, so there's no need for a survey. What would happen is if the board is acceptable to this, this would go in a pile, so to speak, of properties that we then notice someday in the paper as going up for sale to see if there's any objections. If there are no, there's a legal process with, I'm not sure how many times it would have to be in the paper, but if, it might be twice, I'm not sure, but if it's, if there are no objections and if the board agrees, then we would, I believe Council Huddle would actually draft the deed, I'm not sure, but at that point, it would actually be sold. So right now, this is just to say, will, is the board interested? Will they do this? So that when we do come through with a list of properties that we're willing to sell, we can include this. We don't, due to the cost of publishing those notices, we don't just want to do one at a time. Our publication costs would probably exceed what they're paying. So we'd want to do it with others that are going through the process as well.
So this is a total of about a quarter of an acre between the two parcels?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Can't keep up with us, can you, JJ?
We want to see tomatoes growing on the, the nineteen.
Just don't roll down the hill.
So just for the record, then, staff will follow up with the interested parties and let them know when we're able to proceed with the paperwork and do more on that.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to five I, County Engineer Dyer Contract, Mr. Christensen. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Richard Christensen, Curry County Roadmaster. The road department would like... Good evening. The road department would like the board to authorize a contract with Dyer Partnership to provide engineering and surveying services. Good evening. Uh, the road department would like the board to, um, authorize a contract with Dyer Partnership to provide engineering and surveying services. The road department reviewed Exhibit A, their fee schedule, and we find it reasonable. And it would be held for three years with a contract that'd be renewed annually every year for three years.
Okay, one second, sir. All right, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the contract for the county engineer, um, by the Dyer Company.
And this is also appointing them as our surveyor on an as-needed basis.
Okay.
And as our surveyor and on an as-needed basis.
Okay, I, if I could just add, um, so, Mr. Christensen, you have an agreement actually with them, right, that the board has to sign?
Yes.
Okay, so then what, for the part about appointing them as the county surveyor, that part would not be in agreement? That would actually be by an order. So I do have an order that you would have to sign to that effect.
Okay. So do I need to amend the motion?
No, you do not. I just want you to recognize it's an agreement and an order. It's two separate documents.
Did you second, Mr. Chair?
I didn't yet, no.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Uh, five L, CTR Facility in Port Orford, Ms. Schmelzer?
The transfer facility up in Port Orford is owned by the county, and CTR uses it, um, for the garbage. Um, hauls their trucks in there, stores the garbage in there, et cetera, people drop off garbage. Um, they do give us fees, um, to do that, to use our facility. And what has happened is the building, it's an eight hundred square foot, um, I don't wanna call it a building because it's actually three-sided, but it's a three-sided structure, eight hundred square feet. It's in very poor condition. Um, I forwarded photos to you from CTR and from Eric Hanson. Um, Eric, Eric has asked that I pass around.
I saw it the other day and touched it, yeah.
I saw it, yeah.
And to pass with you, it's full of spiders, so I prefer to just put it away.
No extra charge.
Nice example of dry rot.
The, the question is, do we want to try and repair this facility, or do we wanna just rebuild it? Staff's recommendation is that we put it out for bits to just have it rebuilt. Um, there's, CTR has said they would be interested in working with us on helping fund that. Um, we can use some of those franchise fees for that as well. I'm, I can't speak on behalf of CTR, but I said, but like I said, they, they have an interest in working with us on making sure we get a new facility there and helping fund it.
This is a, uh, and, and something we need to run by Larry at BJ's up in Nor, or Coos Bay, though, they build pole buildings real good.
I'm thinking that, I'm thinking we can get one put up at a very reasonable price. I mean, the building really is pretty much.
Mr. Hanson told me also that the two people he spoke to about this, neither one of them wanted to redo the building. They wanted to tear, it was a flat tear now.
Oh, yeah, definitely. But I did talk to Luke Pike, who's the manager of CTR, and he said they did not need it as high, and they would like to be part of helping and designing it so that it could be done probably, um, at a better price.
And that's a good point. Council Huddle and I spoke with Luke today, and we, um, we want to involve him in the process if the board decides to move ahead because we wanna make sure that it's sized for growth with the development that's coming up there. We wanna make sure that if it needs to be bigger, it's built to size now instead of having to add on or do a second building.
Okay.
And I think he would be very willing to deal with us. I've dealt a lot with him in the past, and he's, he's been good to us.
They'll work with us on helping fund it too, you said?
Um, they haven't, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but they, they have an interest in working with us on that.
Okay. Do I get a motion?
I move that we, uh, move to replace the, um, CTR facility in Port Orford.
I have a second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next, we have Director Schmelzer's report.
I just have a question real quick. Um, oh, I'm sorry, we already did the grant sub-resident monitoring rules. Okay, so, um, one of the things I wanted to bring up is, um, if we still wanted to have night meetings, if we still wanted to meet off-site, or if we wanted to continue with our current schedule, I do have a copy of it here that I'm just gonna share with you. As you know, tonight was supposed to be in Brookings, and we ended up not having it in Brookings. We had three meetings today, and we also have some challenges with, um, you know, making sure we have media coverage when we go into a different area. It also, um, so, so pass them down. So this is the schedule that you agreed to earlier in the year. This shows, um, workshops, business meetings, night meetings, um, locations of those meetings, the scheduled quarterly reports. And I just wanna make sure that we can agree how we move, how we're moving forward. Um, today, of course, we had an eleven o'clock meeting because people really aren't quite sure of our schedule. So I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page with this before we start scheduling them. Because if we are going to have them in Brookings and Port Orford, and if we are still gonna have them at five o'clock, we have to make sure we make those arrangements with Grant Media.
So they're going to be there to televise the meetings?
Um, if we have it in, uh, Brookings or Port Orford, we would have to have them there to televise the meetings.
Okay, so at what additional?
Or not televise them.
Okay.
Or not televise them.
So what would be the additional cost? Do we know that?
There won't be any additional cost.
If I remember correct, there was not an additional cost.
For them to go to Port Orford, or? Interesting, okay.
Commissioner Boyce?
Even if there was, we've been bragging about, uh, doing what's best for the citizens. We don't have a great turnout here tonight, I admit. But it's, uh, it's gonna take a while, I think, in my view, to get this off the, off the ground a little bit, so to speak. And to keep our promises with the direction we wanna go. Ultimately, we may not keep the evening meetings, but we do need, I think, more data to learn what's best for the citizens, what's workable, what is affordable. But we're not talking about any great expense here, in my view. This is incredible work to be this far ahead and organized. I think it sends a message to the citizens, hey, you can count on us. We probably won't change this unless there's really something significant happens that, that causes that. So thank you for this work.
Commissioner Gold?
I think it would be good for us to evaluate after we have a meeting in Brookings and Port Orford. Uh, also, I think we need to think about winter storms coming on. You get into the night meetings, say, up in Port Orford, not a pretty sight, so.
Well, that's, that's, that's what's going to be my, my comment to Commissioner Boyce. I, I agree that I'd like to keep this going at least through the summer and see how it turns out for everyone. Uh, I do see some problems with the possibility of, you know, certain, like Commissioner Gold having to drive from Port Orford on a late stormy night all the way to Brookings, or, you know, our press having to come from the South County all the way up and back, or vice versa. So, but I would, I, I do agree that this is a very good thing. Actually, it was talked about in the very beginning, and I think this is really great for the citizens of this county that can't attend the normal meetings during the day. So I would like to see this at least continue through the summer into the fall, and then let's reassess again, and before winter, we'll reassess and see how everyone feels.
One word, commitment. Thank you. I'm with you.
All right.
Chair, I would just like to thank, um, John Jesuit, our administrative assistant. He's the one who put the calendar together, and he did a really good job.
All right, JJ.
JJ!
Just keep in mind, we'll probably change it a hundred times before we finish, but.
That was the whole, excuse me if I may?
Yes, sir.
That was the whole idea, to let the public know they could look at dependable scheduling to the very best of our ability not to change that. Maybe after the fall, um, yeah, but no, we don't wanna make a hundred changes on it. That's the whole point. That's what we've been working towards for two and a half years now. Thank you again.
So then just some quick staffing updates. Um, as you know, we have Office Pool, and we opened that up for, um, people to submit applications. We had four people actually submit applications and be interviewed. So we'll be bringing a higher order forward for the, those four people. So if somebody needs someone to cover for vacation or something, there is a group of people available that they can call in on this pool basis, this irregular basis. Um, a lot of times, these people end up becoming permanent employees. You know, they work out really well on an interim basis, and then as people leave, they end up filling in. So, um, that is how Mr. Jesuit actually started. So, um, we've done the interviews on that, and we'll have the higher order at the next meeting. We did, um, send the finance director's job description off to LGPI. It did come back one step higher, so, um, and we are advertising that position right now. That is in the newspapers.
Remind me what one step higher means?
Pay, the pay is one, one higher. So I think it's a E fifteen instead of an E fourteen, maybe? Or maybe it was even two.
Question, uh, Director, you mentioned the finance director. Technically, the position is county accountant, but it compares to a, you know, that's a statutory definition, but it compares to a finance director of most any, anywhere else, I think. And that, I think that was some of our issues with getting that thing properly squared away before.
That's correct. In speaking with Louise Colstrom, she was saying that, you know, we were advertising it as a county accountant, which is complete, which is different. You know, she said, she wasn't even gonna look at the job ad the first time because it said county accountant, she said. But she's interested in it as a finance director. Um, so what we did, we've revised the job description slightly, so it says finance director, and then in the writing, also serves as county accountant. And then added some more detail, some information about the grant tracking and some of those other responsibilities that weren't in the job description before, but that that person really does do anyway on a day-to-day basis.
Okay.
And then we also did submit, um, the board was talking about somebody being the transient lodging tax collector and, um, responsible for the business licenses, and then back up to Mr. Jesuit and some other odd jobs. So we did submit that to LGPI, and we did get, um, that job description and its salary, recommended salary back today. So that one will be coming forward at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Comments? Commissioner Gold?
Okay, one comment on the schedule before I get into my comments. There's already a change. We're not having a meeting seven-three, so.
Okay.
Just a comment.
It's a fluid schedule is what it is.
Well, I know that. Uh, just a quick comment. I met with GAO, uh, yesterday with a group of people regarding the fire investigation, Chetco Bar Fire Investigation. That meeting went very well. Those citizens who had been directly affected by the fire were included in that meeting, and they were very grateful that they had that opportunity. So that's my report.
Okay, my report is, um, the possibility of getting one of the two of you to do some more work. I, I do not qualify for this because I am already on a fire district in the county. Um, and as many of you may know, I am looking at some of the districts in the county and the way that the finances are administered in those districts. But I have received a letter from Special District's Insurance Company, and, uh, I will briefly read this, that they are looking for, "A Board of Trustees is soliciting applications from persons interested in serving on the SDIS Board of Trustees." It is, they have one position vacant, the term expiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty, and they would like to have, uh, commissioners on that board. I have the application here. Again, I do not qualify for it because it says if you are on a four, forest district, you are not qualified, or you're not allowed to be on this, so.
So I am with the Cape Ferrelli Fire District. I'm their board chair, so.
I'll support that.
Okay. Are they even paying all your trips and everything? There's your app.
No, I'm.
No, she's on a district. She can't go. If you're on a fire district, I'm on the Wedderburn Fire District. I was elected to the Wedderburn Fire District. If you're not interested in it, that's fine, too. We don't have.
Let me read it and bring it back before I commit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, couple of comment, well, the, the only other comment I have honestly is, um, Rogue River, uh, what Mr. Barnes brought forward, uh, in our last meeting, and the, the rock situation that we have here, and, uh, and the shoals that have been created. Um, I'm actually quite frustrated. I have sent emails to our congressmen, um, state senators. I've sent, I've had numerous phone calls, never having even someone return about the issues with the Rogue River and the rock situation, the shoals that we have, uh, just to ask some questions about permitting, um, about how to deal with this, any offer that they could give us and a direction with the, uh, with the Corps of Engineers. And it's disappointing to me that we've had no responses from anyone in Washington on this. So that's, that's that. Uh, I did, I did, uh, myself and Steve Barland did attend the port meeting here in Gold Beach and the port meeting down in, um.
Harbor.
In Harbor last week. Um, the Corps is, I think, in Harbor now, and they're coming up here, I'm guessing, in the next week or two to start cleaning up the mouth of the river here. Uh, but they're very limited in what they can do. They can only go to the mouth of the port, and they will not go past it for any reason. There are, uh, actually, Mr. Barnes was at the Gold Beach meeting with, uh, Mr. Barland and I. And there are ways to do this. Uh, the permit, it's a permitting process, and it's gonna take the federal government to help us push through this. Um, but, um, right now, our river, um, is in dire condition, as we all know. And I would certainly appreciate, if there's anyone out there listening, any help that they can give us. Uh, and I would hope that Washington would be contacting us in the near future to give us direction. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'll have some information for you that will be supportive, and I appreciate your, your leadership on this. Um, of my, of our thirty county issues, I've moved it to number two in terms of importance. Of course, that list changes a lot, especially with the top six or eight. I had a really pleasant, uh, visit to Pacific High School, uh, a week ago with, uh, Parks Coordinator Josh Hopkins. And, you know, we're looking at the property. It's not a done deal yet, but I think, uh, when you look at the maps, I'll pass these two over to you. It's, those are some beautiful locations there. Of course, it's the entrance of the high, uh, excuse me, the entrance of the airport, close to the county shop. Uh, but the tour at, at Pacific High, I haven't been there for ten years. I used to play basketball there in city league, and it was tough to get around those Pacific guys. It was tough competition, but anyways, a beautiful campus. It is incredibly clean. Uh, they're only graduating thirteen kids this year, uh, which is kind of a sign of the times. But they have arguably the best metal shop, the best wood shop in southwest Oregon. And not enough kids. And right in between those two shops is a room of about sixteen computers, and so they can tie it all in together. I want them to have a saw shop, a chainsaw shop, and teach kids, young women, young men, how to run a chainsaw and add that to their program. They have eighty acres. If you look on the map, they're behind, east of their campus, but they really don't know what to do with it. They have development trails that are part of the cross-country thing, excuse me, competition, sorry. And, uh, i- if we do land these, this thirty-three acres, um, I think they're gonna be a key player, and I think there's some, some opportunities there to really involve them. So I have a better, more extensive report later on. I just would encourage either one of you, if you haven't yet, go to that campus and, and meet with the superintendent and some of the teachers. It's, uh, I, I knew, anyway, more later. The Oregon Coast Trail, I've got, I've got corralled into supporting that program, and I had a two-hour meeting today. Just absolutely lucky that our meeting didn't start rarely until eleven o'clock, so I was nine to eleven. But here's some information on that that I'll pass out. And there's just a lot of enthusiasm and excitement. That'll give you also a more extensive report on that down the road. But a big, big part of our visitor promotion, our tourism, marketing, and so stay tuned. Uh, there's some hurdles, but there's some key people involved and a lot of volunteers and some, uh, fairly, uh, fairly significant funding. Uh, moving now, we're hoping and praying that the eleven Republican senators go back to work tomorrow. Um, you know, there's three major bills that affect Curry County that we're on pins and needles. Uh, that if they do show up to work tomorrow and, uh, they are determined, uh, then they can have some votes on Friday, one of which is one point seven million for the, uh, sod work that we desperately need. Right now, I put that as number three for what I, I mean, how do you, how do you prioritize? But that one point seven million is a very good chance we'll get that. Um, Senate Bill nine four one, of course, is the two million for the emergency room to be open in Brookings. I think that's got a better-than-even odds opportunity of getting through the last minute here, which would essentially be by Friday. And then the other. And then the other one is the aggregate funding study for the work you're doing in the estuary, the amount of aggregate gravel, rock mess, and of course, how that affects the fish, as you know. So those three bills all have a fairly good chance of passing. Again, we're on pins and needles. It's a, you know, Oregon has got national attention because of House Bill 2020, and the Senate Republicans walking out because they all represent rural Oregon and the effects it would have, the great effects it would have on their citizens, and certainly, we are right in the middle of that. So I hope at our next meeting, I have something really positive to report on those three major issues, and I, I go into this weekend, in the next 48 hours, quite optimistic, Mr. Chair. The only other comment I have, I'm, I'm the finance director, county accountant. I'm still, I don't have an opinion, I'm still just not convinced it's a full-time job. And so I'm, I'm going to need some help on that over time, and, and you've already spent some time on that. And so if, as you spoke to the public and said, hey, if somebody out there is interested, we could use the help, and if, in fact, it is part-time, then that might be easier to dial in with the help of the, of the people we have, you know, really qualified, long-term employees in that section. I think, I think we can develop some, create a program that will get the job done for us. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Council Huddle, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chair, thanks very much. Other than, sorry, just one last thing is that we did adopt on the consent agenda the local public health authority rules for monitoring grants. What was submitted in the electronic packet was a draft of that. It was done as a placeholder, and at your places, you had some paper handouts for me, and I've handed them to JJ for the record of the actual rule, and it's ready for Director Schmelzer's signature after the board approved it. So that's, I just wanted to, on the record, say that part.
Okay, great. I have one more thing I just forgot about. I'd like to give kudos to Ms., Ms. Colstrom. We met today with the Ethics. I had another meeting with them this afternoon after...
You mean the auditors?
I'm sorry, the auditors, Ethics, listen to me, I'm sorry. Long day, I've been here since 6:15 this morning. But anyway, with the auditors, and she has greatly reduced the list of, of issues with the county. They were very, very pleased with, with the work she's done, and I just want to wish her well with her new position. Godspeed and good luck.
I've warned the three Columbia commissioners what they're getting into. Know that she, she's greatly going to be missed, Mr. Chair.
This meeting is adjourned.